Good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome. It is, welcome to the, what is it, the May ninth meeting of the Glendale Elementary School District Board Meeting. Please let the minute show that we have all five board members present accounted for. Ms. Segata-Jones, I believe we have a slight change to the agenda this morning?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, since we do have our retirees and other celebrations tonight, I'm going to ask that if we have called to publics, we put that after the rec- the recognitions, please.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the change?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda swapping number two, call to the public with number three, special recognition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harmeel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to our special recognition, Ms. Segata-Jones.
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, it is really my honor to present to you the retirees. I'm going to begin up here and then we'll go down. Please, I'm sorry, audience out there in community, I'm struggling still, as you can tell, with asthma and allergies as the rest of you, so I'm going to try to keep my voice for some things and then pass it on to someone else. But I'd like for, at this time, if you're able, all of our retirees just to stand where you are, our retirees. Please stay standing, you represent 434 years of service, so. We do know that some of you, by a show of hands, retirees, if you are a student in the Glendale Elementary School District, please raise your hand. Martine. Martine, Martine was a first grade student at SINE and he completed all of his education at SINE. Thank you, Martine, you truly are a really, really part of this community, a pillar of this community. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it. All right, I want, please stay standing if you can. As we say farewell to some of the most cherished members of this school district, I want to pause to express our deepest gratitude for their years of dedicated service. Your commitment has been remarkable, your journey with us has been inspiration and it has an impact on everyone that you've worked with. Your passion, your expertise, your unwavering commitment, you've left a lasting mark on the hearts and the minds of students and colleagues and the entire GSD community and we value and appreciate you. Your legacy isn't just about the lessons that you taught or the projects that you had to accomplish, but the countless lives you've touched and the lasting impressions you've made on each of those people. You've been the guiding light for decades, like four decades or more, hundreds, 434 years, that's a lot. You've shaped futures and instilling values what will endure for years to come. As you embark on this new chapter of your life, know that contributions will always be remembered and cherished. As we walk down halls or through buildings or on grounds, we will think of you and remember your accomplishments. Your dedication has helped shape the fabric of this incredible GSD organization and your absence will be keenly felt and missed. Thank you for your years of service, your wisdom, again, your unwavering commitment to this organization, our students, our community. May your retirement be filled with joy. We wish you the best in the next phase of your life and the next legacy that you are going to create. We will be deeply missed by your presence, but the work you did lives on in GSD and the hearts that you have touched will always be touched and remembered by you. So, thank you so much for everything that you have done. On behalf of this governing board, we truly appreciate your service to this organization and we wish you the best. Thank you. Could I please have the retirees, you may sit down. If you are able. The retirees, friends or families that are here, would you please stand for a moment or raise your hand, whatever you can do. Thank you, thank you. Families and friends, thank you so much for sharing your family member with us. We know that we have many jobs that take them away from you, not just during the week, but sometimes on the weekends or after hours, and we truly appreciate you sharing them with us. We know that you're proud of them and we are proud of them, but again, thank you for sharing your family with us. We appreciate you as well. You may be seated. At this time, I am going to ask the governing board, and I would like just, even though you can read their names, I'd like to introduce them for just a moment for our guests, and they're going to be the ones that will help celebrate this incredible day for you. So, we do have Mr. Mike Martinez, our board president, Ms. Brent- Ms. Brenda Bartels, our board clerk. Board member Monica Pimentel. Board member Mary Ann Wilson. Board member Hector Harmeel. And future board member Giovanni Harmeel. At this time, I still have a lengthy agenda to get through and my voice is going to go, so at this time, I'm going to have Ms. Avianna Alvarado Parsons, our Director of Communications, she will do the honors of announcing your names and the number of years of your service. What you will do, Ms. Powell will have our, the administrators or those that are presenting the award, they will hand you the award, you'll come this way, we'll shake hands and we'll thank you for, again, your service.
Good evening. It's an honor to welcome our first retiree, Ms. Jacqueline Kemsley from Desert Garden with six years of service. Let's welcome Ms. Tammy Smith from Harold W. Smith School with seven years of service. From Bicentennial South School, we have Cynthia Thornton with nine years of service. With 16 years of service, we have Martine Lopez. Let's welcome Tanya Hackamire with 23 years of service. With 24 years of service, Ms. Pamela Pence. From Horizon, Lee Sneddon with 31 years. Let's welcome Mr. Joseph, oh, more claps for Lee Sneddon and more claps for Joseph Bedard, 37 years. And lastly, but certainly not least, we have Ms. Mary Nguyen, 41 years.
Again, retirees, we thank you for your service and everything that you have done and you truly will be missed. As I said in all the other ceremonies that we've had this last week, I think it's time we raise the roof, what do you say?
Yeah.
All right, let's go. Thank you. We have a couple more recognitions we like to do and they're retirees. You're, you can welcome to stay through these, they won't take long because I kind of go really fast and then afterwards we'll, you're, you can go home and celebrate and do something fun and begin your retirement as soon as your last day ends on your contract, please. All right, doesn't begin tonight. All right, I want to begin with, for those of you, we have a lot with us here tonight, that have may not have been here before, and we honor at the board meetings at the beginning of the month, a Just Because Award. And the Just Because Award is for one of our students and one of our employees and it really is sponsored by our Gusto Foundation and we just want to say thank you, Just Because. Thank you for choosing GSD for every place of employment and where you come to school every day and it's just our way of saying we really do appreciate that you're here. And so, we're going to begin with our first Just Because, we're going to begin with our student. And our student is Saul Rojo Lopez and he's from Discovery School. Saul. Do you have your mom with you? Is that your mom with you? You have family with you? Family, come on. Okay, here's how it works, Saul. You never received one of these before? Oh, you're in for a surprise. Here you go. This, okay, this is a yard sign. You go home and you, what time do you go to bed? Nine, 10, 9:30-ish? I'm a little under the weather, maybe you could go at eight for me, but here's what you're going to do. You're going to put this in front of your yard and you're going to stand there and I'm going to drive by and honk and wave and take a picture of you. Sound good? All right, okay, I appreciate that. If not, take a picture, send it to, Ms. Size can have it, I believe, and then we'll post it and put you on X. You've already been on X once, remember, I told you that. All right, so what you're going to do is we, other things for you, Just Because. And Just Because. And then we have the good stuff. Chocolate, come on up. And let's do the pictures with family and then we'll, and friends, where are our Discovery family? Okay, let's go this way, Saul. Got it? Got it? Thank you, Saul. Thank you. Oh, Saul, chocolate. And now we will do the employee and the employee Just Because is Dr. Alfredo Barantes Santa Maria. Would Al's team please come up and join him? He told me he was not bringing his family because he didn't want to share, so. I forgot to announce with Gusto, each of the recipients receive a $50 gift card and Al don't want to share his $50 with Julie, so.
He's in my office.
So, come up, Al, and Ed Services, Norma, your team, everybody. Ed Services, anybody? I know that Al, there you go, got it? Al is like me, he doesn't sleep, so I can tell you probably, it's typically 11:07 PM, my phone goes off with a text and it's Al. It's either some soccer team has won or he has another great idea.
And then you say, "Go sleep."
And then I say, "Go to bed." But, put it out, take a picture, 11:07, I'll be waiting for it, all right? Thank you. Few more recognitions. I'd like to recognize Don Menzenick School. They have been recognized nationally as a capturing kids' heart national showcase school. Don Menzenick. Menzenick family. Ms. Yazi, who's the rest? Tanya, you're a part of that, come on up. So proud of Don Menzenick's staff, community and students for receiving this honor. All right, next, the moment we've all been waiting for. The monthly student attendance award goes to? Discovery. Congratulations. Do we have any Discovery people out there? Come up and take a picture. Saul, come on, you're a part of this. Wait, wait, wait for Saul. Come on, Saul. Let Saul hold it. We're tired of Ms. Size always holding it. She gets to hold it every time. Now we've got a real student. Great. Congratulations, Discovery. At this time, we'd also like to recognize Ms. Tara Barnaby and she was named the GCU Principal of the Month. Here's your invisible certificate. She received it already, but we'd like to say thank you to Tara. Where's the Smith family? We need to take a picture. Smith fam- Tammy Smith, come up, you're a Smith family. Tavis, let's take a picture. You didn't dress up for it? No, it's all right. Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Now, we'd like to recognize Angelique Siz, Exemplary Principal Award by Maricopa County Superintendent at School. She was named the, again, Maricopa County Exemplary Principal. Thank you, Ms. Siz. I'm going to sit down and come back. Oh, come on, you get to get another picture. That's what happens when you're popular. We have one more award. This award that we're giving goes to Ms. Siz in Discovery School. I waited until you sat down. Just on purpose. Discovery was named the National Title I Distinguished School Award, an honor that recognizes excellence in federally funded schools across the country for academic growth and achievement. The National Title I Distinguished Award Team from the Arizona Department of Education interviewed Discovery leadership, staff, parents, and students about the school's Title I program, determined Discovery exceeds state accountability criteria and demonstrates high academic achievement with their letter grade of an A. Come on up. Saul, you have been the most photographed student in GSD. I'm just going to let you know. Oh, we got certificate. Wait, I really have one. Let's let him hold it. At this time again, retirees, if you would like to go and celebrate with your families,
We're going to drag this out a little bit until our littlest board member comes back. We do have a call to the public this evening. The public is invited to address the board on any issue within its jurisdiction, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Governing Board members are not permitted to discuss or take legal action on matters raised during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. However, the law permits board members to do the following at the conclusion of open call to the public. A, respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the board. B, ask staff to review a matter. Or C, ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Those wishing to address the board should complete a call to the public form and submit it to the board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Each speaker will be provided three minutes to address the board unless provided other direction by the board. At the outset of the speaker's remark, the speaker should state his or her name. Call to the public tonight is Mr.
Good evening, Governing Board President, Superintendent Cindy Sagata-Jones, and board members. I've prepared my speech tonight because I know I can ramble, so... I wanted to extend my sincerest gratitude to leaders in this room. I was given an amazing opportunity to work with so many gifted and talented people in GSD that I feel it has helped me tremendously with the growth and development as an educator. To this day, when asked what my profession is, I say teacher. When I look at all the amazing teachers and leaders around me, I feel I have so much... I have grown so much more because of them, and I classified myself in that category still with learning. This job is not easy, and it's seeing the countless hours and devotion that my colleagues put into their campus pushes me to be better, and I thank them for that. In my time here, I have seen our board continuously stand with our teachers and staff to do what's best for kids. I want to thank you for that. I know firsthand that when you save, volunteer your time, you are volunteering to step up. You are actually making a commitment to do whatever it takes to ensure our kids get what they deserve. As a board position, it is meant to help with running the business side of an organization and keep things running smoothly and healthy. When you analyze your time involvement, it should be 20% working with the business sides of things and 80% being involved with the day-to-day activities and being involved in seeing the amazing things and what has happened. I do want to bring up a concern I have. I have seen most of our board members show up for 80% or more of the activities and events that GSD has going on, and there are so many things going on on our school calendars. To me, when I think of what servant leadership is, leadership which exists to serve the people, that is what should be happening. Being involved in the school festivals, committing to sports events, being a part of our recognition ceremonies, or putting in the time to know what is happening shows your commitment to why we wear these shirts, "All in for all kids." So, Mr. Haddamio, since you were sworn in on Thursday, January 12th, 2023, I can say you have not represented the seat you hold with the same convictions that the rest of the board shows. Your lack of presence at our school and district functions leads me to believe that you are here for political spotlight and nothing more. I have seen you call out business items when it is time for celebrate in honor of my colleagues, bring up items that don't reflect students first, and miss so many opportunities to see the amazing things our students, staff, and leadership do, what they do best. I know there are many areas that we need to do better ourselves, but being present and showing up actually gives your insight to making better decision on what matters and what counts. In your comments that Thursday, you stated you were excited to be in this position, and you stated that you knew there was a quiz about who we were and you might fail. The only way to learn people's name is to be present, be involved, and show up for things. I wholeheartedly believe that you should put your money where your mouth is and show up. If I were sitting alongside you, I would have to ask a vote for no confidence and use the evaluation of school board self-evaluation to determine if you are personally meeting the needs of our board. I hope my words help create a change because my kids deserve better. Again, I want to thank you for all that you all do to continue to push GSD to be the best school in the district. And again, Donald Tevis Madison.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Haddamio, you may respond.
Appreciate those comments. You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, I don't see you at the events I do show up because there are some events that I do show up, but, you know, I'll take that into consideration. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on in our agenda to the consent agenda, are there any items... Any comments or remarks on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Second.
Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to... We have no reports or informational items, so moving on to the action items. Action item... Yeah. Action item 6A, the land acknowledgement during opening exercises.
Yes, Martinez, members of board, do you ask that we bring this for just an action item from the discussion from the last board meeting?
Any comments? This is a returning item from our discussion two weeks ago.
Well, I did a little research on, after our last meeting on this, and while what I had read was from other states, I did find that the majority of these statements are read at the higher education level at the universities before a celebration of some kind. I did read an article that was from a professor in... I don't know what university, but it was in Indiana. And she had mentioned that, you know, it's good to start early at the elementary level, but that it's at a board meeting would be pretty... Before a board meeting would be pretty ineffective if it's equity and equality and inclusiveness that you're looking for, which is what that statement, I'm pretty sure, is for. But that a plaque or maybe even placed on the website, you know, is probably more effective in that way. So I just thought I'd put that out there.
So what I'm hearing is if we don't do it through opening exercises, you'd be open to do it for opening ceremonies and graduations?
I don't know about that, but... I mean, at the last meeting, I had suggested the website. I thought that was something that would reach more people, you know, in that way. Or even a plaque. I think Mrs. Pimentel had mentioned something about plaques in the school, and that, again, is also, I think, pretty effective. But I don't know how many people really watch a board meeting, you know? And not to mention, if it's done at every board meeting, it can just become part of the... That nobody listens to, you know? Or it just doesn't really mean anything after a while. It's just words, so...
And I still firmly believe, you know, we're here to educate the kids of the community in the best places in the classroom, and that's the biggest impact right there is educating them. I'm a firm believer in, you know, we need to learn from our history, good, bad, or ugly, and that's where it should be so that we actually reach more people and they're more aware.
I was fortunate enough to have my dad in from town this weekend. My dad grew up on reservation post in Arizona, went to Parker High School as a Parker High School Bronco, to which he still tells me in the Al Bundy-est sort of way what a great football player he was at the high school level. My dad moved off the reservation when he was old enough to leave and has lived in Phoenix and currently lives out of state right now. So I was happy to have him down for the weekend. And I kind of talked to him about the land acknowledgement, and he kind of echoed my same thoughts that we kind of went over last time. Not a fan of the land acknowledgements, thinks they're ineffective. But that being said, I mean, it's an action item for a reason. No one person makes any major decisions like this, so if the board chooses to go along with it, then I will go along with, you know, whatever the majority of the board does. But my personal opinions and the opinions of my family, not for land acknowledgement in any way.
I just want to thank Mrs. Wilson for doing research and finding out what is happening out there. I think it's... I can understand where if we want to show respect and it turns into something where it's part of the rigor moral and gets lost and can... I understand that. But again, I realize we don't have consensus on this board, and I'm still in favor of either putting something on a website, our website, or a plaque somewhere in the building. I don't know that that would be... Considering it says, "Recommended action is that we discuss and consider taking action regarding the inclusion of the land acknowledgement during opening exercises." So I don't know if that's something that we can entertain, considering that's the verbiage
We can move the motion on how you would like it to read.
So you can motion to change the action item since it's essentially still the same topic?
Just like you changed the verbiage.
Yeah.
If there is no consensus to do it during opening exercises, and the concern I've heard echoed is the reach and also repeated... If we repeat it too many times, which I don't agree with, but I hear it, I think it'd be perfect to perform this land acknowledgement during graduation ceremonies. You know, all the families are there, they can all hear it, and we don't do it every month, it's one time a year. Is that something we can find consensus on?
I don't know if I'd want to step on any toes. I mean, if we read the land acknowledgement before graduation ceremonies, and then I, you know, I totally understand the reason for that, but... know, I totally understand the reason for that, but is there going to be a group that wonders why they're being excluded, why there's not a statement that addresses them? Or, you know what I'm saying? I don't know. I don't know if I want to step on any toes that way, or possibly maybe, you know.
I don't think that's been a concern with organizations that do do it for other ceremonies just because we are acknowledging the land and not, you know, because not everyone owned that, this land. It's historically been one group of people. I don't think I've ever heard that concern echoed.
Well, we have had other statements come through here before. So, in my years that I've been sitting on the board, there's been a couple. So, it's not, this isn't the only statement that has come our way. So, that's why I'm saying it's, how many statements are we going to be reading or, you know, that we have to apologize?
Just one.
That we didn't read this one, but we're going to read this one, and, you know, it's, I don't know.
I think my feelings on it is if that's the way you want to lean, I would disagree with that because I believe promotion should be about as sacred as a K8 ceremony as it should be. It should be 100% about those kids that are sitting on the stage and 100% about the teachers and the staff that put them there. And I don't want to detract from them in any way, be it land acknowledgement or anything else. We are there 100% from the moment those kids walk in the door to the moment they leave that school. I want it to 100% be about those kids.
And I'm going to steadfastly, you know, point out, we're here to, you know, our priority is the education of our kids. And, you know, we do have fourth grade, the Arizona history, and that's the perfect place to make sure that we have great administrators here that can make sure that that is part of what they're doing when they're in that classroom. So, even if you're saying that this is going to be done once, I'd rather it be part of a segment, you know, a learning component, because then they're going to go deeper than just somebody reading a statement.
So, just to make sure we go full circle, so we talked about the opening exercises for governing board meeting, and I don't think there's a majority for that. We talked about opening for the promotions. The other item that was brought up by Ms. Wilson was maybe on the website, put something on there. Does anyone want to have discussion about that? Or the plaque, I believe.
I'm all for that, or the plaque.
I'd say both. I agree with both, putting it on the website, putting it on the front building, and including it in our education for the fourth graders about how this came about.
So, when you say plaque, do you mean just the district office, or do you mean every school site? And then where do you put that next to the building dedication that's in front of each Or is that something you think administration should have discussed? I think, like I said, you know, if you want to reach the most people, the website's probably the way to go. I can tell you, I've walked by all of these plaques hundreds and times, and I couldn't tell you one thing off of them because no one looks at them. I maybe glare at them just to look for funny names because I'm juvenile like that sometimes, so I'll look up there to see who was the governing board member at that time or see maybe when a school site was founded. But once you put it up there, then I don't think anyone will ever look at it again.
I would like to see it on the website. I'm just going to reiterate what I just said. I'd like to see it on the website. I would like it to be explained in class, why we would do a land acknowledgement and who this land did belong to. And at this point, I would like to see a plaque at the district office.
I echo those sentiments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hadamio, I didn't hear your comment.
Oh, I echo the same feelings she has.
May I add something? The only thing that I want to just make sure, I mean, we do have to follow state standards on where it falls in the curriculum and that, so I just want to make sure you understand that piece as well. So, that actually could be part of the Native American Heritage Month of November, be included. I mean, I'm pretty sure they.
Just look at standards and where it falls, I would say. But as we do, you know, as we do, we do, you know, typically across the nation, you see in school districts do it too, is, you know, there are specific months that we dedicate to different groups. I'm personally not a fan of that. I believe we should celebrate all the time, but we do do those months, and we do that because in that particular month, we focus on a particular group, and I support that absolutely. But I don't just want to support Black History Month in February, I want to support that every month of the year. So, that's my only comment, but we can look to where it appropriately falls, there's no doubt. And we do also recognize and celebrate the indigenous month as well.
Okay, is there a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion that the governing board consider approving the inclusion of the land acknowledgement by way of our website, by way of education as to why we honor the land acknowledgement and by plaque placed at the district office.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Can I explain my vote? You know, it's unfortunate we didn't find consensus, but I am moving with the will of the board and moving, I would love to move forward with the land acknowledgement on the website, the education as to why, and the plaque, because that is as far as we've got. I do think we need more, but again, I'm moving forward with the consensus of the board, so I vote aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye, but I still firmly believe that, you know, we're supposed to be here focusing on how to, you know, make sure that our kids are getting educated.
Well, I will vote in the dissent with nay. With that, the motion is approved. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 6B, policy revisions, second reading.
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, these are the second readings of Beginning with the B E D B agenda and the order in which we have the agenda, any changes to that?
I would like to request a change on item B E D B to permanently move call to the public after special recognition. I believe those recognitions should be celebrated, and they should be done with absolute, the clearest of air and intentions regardless of what happens during call to the public, be it good or bad, especially when you have families coming in and you have kids out in the audience and people, we should celebrate good things and we should never detract from those celebrations for people. And I think it's by moving the call to the public after that, we still give our constituents the ability to address the board before we hit any consent agenda items, information items, or action items, and yet still give the honor and recognition to those people that we give those special recognitions to, like our retirees today. Any thoughts on that?
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
I would agree.
With that, I would like to motion to adjust item B E D B to move the call to the public after special recognition in the policy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. What are the other policy, are the, the other ones are just the second readings from last time?
The second readings of any of them? It's the policy for communication, and then we can go through them, or do, let me ask, are there questions on any of those policies that you've had? I don't recall from the policies. The first read that there were any questions, the only thing that we changed was we had to correct the statute in one of those policies, and that was it. So, since you reviewed them again, are there any other changes you'd like to see?
All right, is there a motion to adopt the second reading of the remaining policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the remaining policies listed.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to action item 6C, the ASBA political agenda priorities.
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, you need to look at taking action to approve the top five political agenda priorities.
So, for those of you in the audience who are watching, playing the home game, ASBA, the Arizona School Board Association, each year puts out a survey to school boards around Arizona to help determine what their top five political priorities can be. Anything from school funding to rural bus routes to anything that has to do with a school district or school board. And so, they send the survey out to all the school boards, and every year, we have to adopt our top five political priorities for the school district, and we send that over to ASBA, in which time those items are voted on, and then ASBA takes that direction from the individual school boards and works for it as part of their political action. Earlier, when the agenda went out last week, I asked the school board members to submit their personal top five to the school district. I also had the school district executive team also submit their top five. So, in the rankings that our school board members see before you, you have your initials by each item as you submitted them. The item for ET stands for executive team, so those are the items that the school administration submitted as some of the top priorities based on what they see as running the school district on a day-to-day basis. So, I thought that would be good feedback, looking at the suggestions and discussions that we had last year at this time. So, I thought it's easier to be upfront about it and kind of see where their mind lies. The items where we don't have any initials, we're just going to go ahead and skip through. But we do have a pretty good ranking of items in here, so we're just going to go down the list. We'll start with item 111, the maximize state funding for competitive salaries to attract, recruit, and retain talented teachers and staff, increase the pipeline of certified teachers, and increase the diversity of the teaching workforce and for difficult, and for difficult to fill positions. Ms. Wilson?
You're here.
Yes.
I'm all in. You know, I wished I could have just chosen them all because they're all so important, which is why I chose more than five. But I do feel very strongly about that one.
I do remember the first time that I sat on this board when we went through this, and I'm like, this is like a list of puppies and rainbows. No one is going to say no to any of these things. So, we have to pick those things that are closest to us, or closest to us, and I think closest to where we think we are as a school district, what our priorities as a school district and as representatives of G E S D need to push forward. Is there anyone else that wants to change one of their priorities? And don't get me wrong, I know you're sitting out there, it's like, how can Mike say no to school funding and teacher funding? That's not it at all. It's not that this isn't a priority, it's just that there's a lot of very specific items that are very specific to things in this district in a timely manner. So, don't take it at all that Mike does not want competitive salaries. Absolutely, we want competitive salaries, it's just we have a list, there's probably 40 or 50 different priorities on here, and we have to narrow it down to five right now, so. Okay, so let's skip on to item 12 because that is one that we have, pretty much four out of five board members and the school administration, and I believe this was one of the items from last year that was also a priority. Provide consistent dedicated sources of base funding that equips all Arizona schools with adequate support to address academic, social, and emotional needs of its students. Goes on to specify arts education, transportation, exceptional student services, and so on. This seems to be, have a lion's share of the votes. I see a lot of head nodding, okay.
It seemed to be more all-encompassing.
Okay, I'm going to put a star next to this one, and we'll kind of come back to this. I want to point out for item 13, submitted by school administration, repeal the constitutional aggregate expenditure limit via legislative referral to the voters. This one was sidelined last year because of the reprieve that I believe we got at the time, and that reprieve has expired at this point. So, maybe it's time to revisit that, maybe more.
We also, though, we have, besides the five, we have the two extra.
Yes.
Right, so really a total of seven that we can.
Yes. Does anyone have any disagreement to, I don't think, no, no one's going to disagree to anything. Okay, I'll put a half star next to this one. Point five stars. All right, item number 14, Ms. Wilson and the school administration, fully fund full day kindergarten and include kindergarten students in the override calculation. This actually, someone brought this up at a meeting yesterday as to why those kids weren't counted, and I was like, I don't know why they weren't counted. It's, school funding is its own beast. Again, how many, how many kindergarten, about how many kindergarten students are we funding right now?
Mr. Barrigan, what is the, at the half amount, only what we get the funding for? Mr. Barrigan's very clear about saying we only get half of that funding, so, Mr. Barrigan.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Sagata Jones, she nailed it. I mean, the state, I think it was in 2010, if I remember correctly, cut full day to half day to try to address the state's deficit budget, and so that has never been reversed. You know, and it hurts, right? Because you who live in the district have approved an override to fund full day K. So, it's been going on for, gosh, it seems like it's 24, and I think it was in 10, so.
Well, and it's also unfortunately agreed that the state doesn't acknowledge as necessary. Yeah.
Mr. President, members of the board, not only do you get half the students as far as the funding levels, but they also don't go, you know, into the calculation as it should have in the MNO override calculation. Because you're being shorted. You're getting hit twice, so to speak.
Starfish is going to be broken up.
I know, there's going to be a lot of stars on my thing. I should have, I should have brought my own stars.
Are you asterixing that one?
Yes, I'll put a half aster, no, I mean, an asterix, I'll just, just a plain asterix. Okay. Item number 17, provide for new space before existing schools exceed their maximum capacity and become overcrowded and provide dedicated and flexible ongoing maintenance funding. Advocate for SFOB, standard replacement of buildings that have exceeded your useful life. Brenda, I see you're on there, and I know that is one of those things that have, it seems like the Capitol lawsuit has been going on since forever. At this point, I don't know, I don't know if this even needs to be an ASBA priority because, to be honest, we just left everyone behind and we're going, we've decided we're going to go and fight this battle by ourselves and whatever, whatever people we can get to help along the way. I think maybe we just kind of leave this one.
Yeah, I know.
We'll let Mr. Barrigan do his thing, and we'll ride your coattails to buckets of money.
Team effort.
All right, now, item number 1-10 was submitted by school administration, formalize the exceptional student services costs study to determine and provide adequate funding levels, including for rural and remote area, distant, remote areas, gifted students, and early intervention programs. Maybe you can explain that a little bit more to us.
We really need, we've talked about that, that with our special populations, that they're not fully funded. You'll see one also that talks about IDEA, you know, there are so many shortages right now in the field of special education, teachers, staff, and that we're having to do contracted services, and then with the state not already funding it the way that it needs to be funded. There's other pieces that go in that. Not only are you talking about the resources and the staff, but also the contracted services, if you can't provide those services within your own district, you contract out for those, are expensive, as well the transportation is door-to-door for our children with special needs, as it should be, but we also need funding for that as well. And this has been in the state, oh goodness, decades that they have failed to address. And we really believe, just because we're seeing such a shortage right now in our special education teacher population, and we still have our children that need to be serviced, and they need to be serviced with highly trained teachers, and be serviced with highly trained teachers. And we shouldn't always have to contract out because we're held at that contracted services, but we do that. And sometimes students have to be contracted. They need to be in the best environment for them. And so we do that. It's just, right now, the funding isn't meeting the needs. As you do know, with surrounding charter schools and that, you know, they don't have to take students with special needs. And so oftentimes, students go there that have not received services for years, months, and then they return to public education. And it's, the children have a more of a deficit that we're trying to make those gains for. And so we, the state really needs to put a focus on children with special needs.
I think for a lot of students, public schools and specifically G E S D is really the only game in town. If you are a special needs student and you need a place to learn, a safe environment to learn, or people that specialize, I mean, Mr. Hadamio, I know you have a background in special education, so you know that there's a need out there.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we often face staff shortages where I worked at. There was many times when there were kids that were on IEP where they had, were experiencing in a behavior. And I was the only one that could handle that. But there would be multiple behaviors happening at once and I wish I could clone myself and, you know, go to all those behaviors. But sometimes, teachers would have to deal with it on their own and that disrupts the learning for the rest of the kiddos. And I'm only able to take one or two kids out and have them relax, only one or two at a time, depending on the intensity of their behavior. But yeah, I fully agree with this one. I would love to add my name to that one instead.
I think I would echo that, Senator. I would add my name to that as well. It's just one of those things and hate to say it, sometimes these are the kids that fly under the radar. And there's so many other things on here that I want to pay attention to. And I think Ms. Sagata Jones and the school administration is right. There, if we have to contract out for services, it means there's already a shortage. And then what happens when that shortage affects is those, those companies that we're contracting with. So I'm going to, I will add my name to 1-10 as well.
Well, that was, that was the irony. Because when I was looking at this list, I was looking specifically at that because I, you know, looking at the vouchers, I do see those expenses every, every week. But at the same time, 1-2 includes exceptional students and looking at the funding for it. And that's why I didn't pick that one, just because it was kind of embedded in that other one. That way I wouldn't tie up one of my choices.
I see that. I see that.
Because, no, I fully see those expenses every week.
Yeah, we're just asking, yeah, we want them to look at, you'll see this come up in several of them, but really formalize the cost study. They've, oh man, I'm telling you, that had to be at least, what, 15 years ago, the last one? In 2000?
Seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm like, can't even hear.
In 2007 was the last time the state did the more comprehensive special ed calculation assessment.
And hasn't been done since then. And it was, we were really behind the eight ball then as a state.
Yeah, both, both state and federal. Because federal is never fully funded either for, for that.
Our students need services.
Yep.
Okay, we'll come back to that one. Moving on to item 1-13, Ms. Bartels, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Pimentel, replace current year funding with a system provides districts appropriate stable annual budgeting ability and technical reliability. Current year funding has been a pain ever since it replaced several years ago. Are any thoughts, Mr. Barrigan?
Mr. President, members of the board, there's no doubt that prior year funding was more advantageous for districts that allowed the planning. I would not suggest you waste any political capital on this one, mainly because we take a conservative approach. I mean, you know, with the decline, you don't lose 4,600 kids over 11 years, right? And not manage the way that we have. I mean, I think we've been, we've taken that conservative route. I would not encourage you to waste any of those five slots with this one. You know, would I love to see that go back to prior year funding, I would, but not at the expense of some of the other things that you've discussed here tonight.
And I think even with prior year funding, we've lost so many students over the past several years. If we're just kicking the can down the road at some point, and if we aren't conservative and fiscally prudent about where we're spending our money and how we spend it, it's not going to matter if you go off current year up right here.
That's it.
All right, let's move on to section two, item 2-6. Support local, local board authority for student suspensions and to adopt open enrollment policies based on capacity. Ms. Wilson, any specific thoughts for that one?
Yeah, I just, you know, when you have to, we have open enrollment and, I mean, we have to take everybody, you know, that's, it can be a burden on, you know, the classroom sizes. And I just felt that that was something that was important.
Ms. Wilson, let, we do, it's based on capacity. So Dr. Lefebvre, do you want to address that?
Members of the board, Superintendent Sagata Jones, so just to echo Superintendent Sagata Jones, the way the current policies exist now or statute, there are three tier groups and within that first tier group, it is based on capacity. So if you're at capacity within a specific gray level, you can deny open enrollment. So that already exists.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Okay. Let's take a look at item 2-8, 2-8. Looks like we have most, most of us on there. Oppose any legislation that intends to lessen or curtail the legal authority of locally elected school boards, including their authority to approve a curriculum. It's no surprise that the board members pretty much all agreed on this. It's one of the benefits of having a locally controlled and locally elected school board member that we're kind of close to home at this point.
Because our team, as members of the executive team also did that, but we narrowed it down to trying to stick to our five. But that was also brought up with some of our team members as well, for us.
And like, like so many people, we don't like being told what to do sometimes, especially if it's, those decisions are made by people with less expertise than the people we can surround ourselves in this school district. Not seeing any names, but they work at the state. Okay, let's move on to item 3, sorry, 2-9. Oppose legislative efforts to ban educational and supplemental materials that provide an inclusive and historically accurate, well-rounded education. I believe that actually bleeds into our comments from 2-8. People that make knee-jerk decisions based on whatever political climate they'd happen to believe in decide they want to make those decisions for everybody. And I'm glad that we have the control, we have the ability to manage that, what is good for our students, what is good for the children that go here, based on, again, the expertise that we surround ourselves with the people in this room for. So I will star that one as well. Okay. Moving into section three areas, each, each area has a header area. This is improve outcomes for all students. Item 3-2, Ms. Bartels, Ms. Wilson, continue reforming English language learner models of instruction to increase integration of English learners and give schools flexibility and resources to administer them. Advocate for the repeal of Prop 203 and replace it with research-based bilingual education. I think we're all very much aware of the friction that we had with the Arizona Department of Education based on this from the past year. I don't know how much of that friction is actually going to come to pass at all based off, I thought there were some changes coming down the.
I thought there was another lawsuit. They was trying to.
It was dropped?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't trust him not to keep trying.
I think an important word there is resources, you know, you know, they need to put money into the resources for those, those programs.
And the, the, the programs that we have in place, that we've put in place have been proven effective. I mean, outside of this school district, they've been proven effective. Within this school district, they've been proven effective. And I think that people, again, making knee-jerk decisions based off things that they believe may not be, you know, that aren't true, is a detriment to our students.
Or just flat-out prejudices.
Just, yeah, just absolutely flat-out prejudices. And that's where Prop 203 comes into place. I see a lot of head nodding, so I'll put a star next to that one as well.
We support the repeal of Proposition 203.
Yes.
All right, item 3-5, support policy that recognizes, respects, and promotes teaching as a profession. While I'd agree with that, I think there's, I think there's other organizations that do that, probably to more effectiveness than ASBA. Let me see, okay.
Enough, Sam.
All right. Item 3-8, rethink and redefine the role and purpose of standardized testing and develop minimal assessments and other measurable outcomes. It seems like, and I know we dealt with this a lot when we were scheduling our site visits, and it's always around testing, and it seems like there is always testing. And if I wanted to know how well my kid was doing, just ask the teacher. They will, they will be able to tell you exactly how your kid is doing without looking up any standardized tests. And that is every teacher out there. You know the kids that are in your classroom and the tests are just a reflection of how that kid felt that day at that moment in time, sitting in that chair at your desk. I am not a big fan of the standardized testing. I, my only, my only thing is, I'm not sure if that's an ASBA, should be an ASBA type policy, but I'm not against it. Any thoughts on that?
Well, there's just me on there, so nobody else.
Okay. Mary Ann picked like 10 things. She couldn't, she couldn't narrow it down to five, which, which just says how, how difficult this is.
I could have circled them all if I could.
Just this page alone, Mary Wilson is on there.
Yeah, MW is a lot, is in a lot of spots on here. Many wishes. All right. Item 3-9, support policy that protects school district employees and students from discrimination, including the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Obviously, there's a lot of federal laws that's involved in that. I know every policy that has come before this board regarding any one of those topics, we have always.
Always support.
We've always been in support of all of those policies. So I think we will continue to do so with or without ASBA. We will always have your back. All right, item 3-10, support legislation and access to funding that would allow school districts to offer school meals to all students free of charge. Woe be the person whoever says his kids shouldn't eat because they don't have $1.50 that day.
I think we've done a good job there with food and nutrition. How Ms. Lefebvre's been able to work, she is, in the summer being the national, she's going to be the president of the National Lunch in Nutrition. So I think we have a strong voice speaking for us at the national level.
I know this, this district does a good job of that. There's other districts that don't.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That was my feeling on that.
Ms. Lefebvre will be representing every child in the state of Arizona.
And I think, I think it's great that even when we had all the support in the world, and I'm speaking specifically during that COVID area, when I remembered school sites giving out boxed lunches to kids, breakfast lunches to kids every day, being out there. I think it was, maybe it was like Monday through Thursday or something like that. Going out, doing such an amazing job, making sure these kids have a meal. And then now that some of those resources are gone, you know what they're doing? They're still doing an amazing job, making sure those kids eat every day. So I, I mean, we should, as a board, we should show our appreciation and maybe buy you lunch one, one time. So if you're ever in my hood, I mean, I guess, I guess you're in all of our hoods because we all live in the district. But if you're ever around, if I ever see you in line at Chipotle or something, your lunch is on me, okay? All right, let's move on to item number 4-1, section under required public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education. This one has, item 4-1 has pretty much everyone, and it seems to always be in the news lately, but establish financial and academic transparencies for all institutions and individuals that accept public funds and enforce financial requirements and seek recovery of improperly received and/or expended funds by individuals. Not beating around the bush, we're talking about empowerment scholarships, we're talking about the freewheeling flow of money with little in check to ensure that that money is accurately spent for the well-being of the child. I can tell you through personal experience, there is not a business or sort of business model that is more audited and more under the microscope than this public school district. You guys get audited every year, multiple times, and you have to pay for that audit. And then you have consultants come in, and then you train your people on how to deal with things like this. And then you send your, your, you know, not only do you send your teachers out for professional development, you send your, all their, your payroll people, your AP people, they get professional development too, because they have to learn, we reinforce things, how not to break the law. I went to the ASBOME, the Arizona Association of School Business Officials yesterday, and it was an entire conference room full of people in there just learning about new laws regarding FSLA stuff, new laws regarding, you know, audit findings and what, what the attorney general is going to look at for the next thing. So school, public school districts deal with this stuff all the time. And so it ticks me off to no end that knowing that someone out there is buying their kid a $500 Millennium Falcon Lego kit as a STEM exercise, when I can't even get a $500 Millennium Falcon Lego kit, and I would absolutely love to have one.
Have one of those imaginary kits. You can have one.
I build it in my mind every day. So I'm going to put a star next to that one. That is, that is going to be, I think, the battleground that we're going to have for the next couple of years. Yeah, okay. Let's move on to 4-2. Repeal any program that gives public funds for private schools or vouchers, ESAs, and private school subsidies and prevent any future expansion. I think those 4-2 and 4-1 kind of roll in together.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And it looks like we have a lot of support on 4-1. So I think we'll, I'm going to cross out 4-2 if, Monica and Mary Ann, you okay with that?
As long as we speak up against vouchers, I'm good with it.
Yeah, just don't give them out, period.
All right. And don't get me wrong, there is, there is a time and a place for vouchers. And when the vouchers were introduced, and we just talked about it earlier, we talked about special education, there are schools that specialize in very specialized types of things and that they have services that we may not be able to provide. Those are an excellent source of vouchers. Hey, get this kid, if, if, if we can't provide the environment here for them, let's put them someplace where they can learn for people that specialize that. I absolutely understand that. But the fact that all of these vouchers are being eaten up by people in the most affluent area codes in Arizona tells me that we are subsidizing someone else's private education as opposed to putting that money into the, into the classrooms that our kids have to attend every day.
Ditto.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move, we're going to skip section five. We don't have anything in there that specifically kind of points towards Arizona rural and remote schools. So it didn't apply to us. So we're going to skip through that. Move on to item 6-2, support policy that promotes social emotional wellness as critical component of improving social climate, safety, and learning for all students and staff. There was a period of time where there was a, I believe, some changes at ADE made offering things like SEL sort of a taboo subject. I think some of that's kind of died away and it didn't matter anyway because we were going to do it because it was what's best for our kids, regardless of whether or not they agree with it or not.
And I do think with Dr. Lefebvre's team, they do a remarkable job and at the school sites with the cells, do an incredible job with that, the cells.
And while I absolutely agree that that should be a priority, I don't think, based on some of the other things, I don't think it's one of the top five for.
We're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, like I said, we're going to, we blaze our own trail sometimes, whether it be Capitol lawsuits or teaching kids how to deal with complex emotions, we will take care of our own first. All right. Oh, there is one other item, 7-2, federal advocacy, advocate for full funding of Individual Disabilities Act, IDEA. I believe, I believe the, I believe there's other organizations that are already doing that and are doing it quite well. And I don't, I think there's other things that ASBA can concentrate on, so. Okay. All right, so let's loop back around. And so now we got to narrow down all these asterix and stars to just five and two alternates because we're going to, they gave us seven that we get to fill out, so we're going to use all seven of them. So let me count some stars here.
We actually have them, have all, I mean, we could put one more in there.
All right.
Yeah, let's just put them all in there. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Can we send the entire thing filled out for them?
6.
Tell them to do all of them.
Oh, 7, I do have 7.
Should we just send this form back to ASBA and just write yes on it?
I counted 7, did you?
I got so confused with his stars, I stopped trying.
That's funny, because me too.
I have 1-2, 1-3, 1-4, 1-10.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I got 6.
Mary Ann, we know you're going to like pat it.
9, 3-2, and then you forgot that one, 4-1.
Yes, okay, so let me read through this. So I have 1-2.
I have 8.
1-3, 1-4, 2-8.
No, you forgot 1-10.
Yeah, 1-10, unless we're putting 1-10 in with 1-2.
Let's put 1-10 in there. Okay, so I got 1, 2, 1, 3, 1, 4, 1, 10, 2, 8, and 2, 9.
I just have 2, 9, I didn't know you had.
I have 2, 8 and 2, 9.
I thought you were going to put those together, no?
Yeah, those seem like they go together, though.
I think if I had to pick 2, 8, I think 2, 8 over 2, 9. I think 2, 8, you can justify 2, 9, which is the curtail legal authority of locally school board members.
Agreed.
Okay, so let's take, I'm going to take off 2, 9, we're going to go with 2, 8. And then I have 4, 1.
Oh, no, 3, 2.
Okay.
3, 2.
3, 2, 4, 1. And then that's it?
So we're combining 2, 8 and 2, 9?
Yes.
And 4, 1 and 4, 2?
Yes.
No, just 4, 1.
Wait, just 4, 1?
Just 4, 1.
Just 4, 1.
Well, 4, 2 is really a subset of 4, 1, I believe. You do 4, 1, you take care of 4, 2.
Yeah.
Is that 7, Liz?
Which ones are you going to put on the?
All right, so let's go, I guess we, did it make us pick a top five with two alternates?
Because it reads the government board will consider taking action to approve its top five political agenda priorities and proposed issues to submit for consideration, so you'll need to do five. There's, you know, it's only five.
No altern, there's not two extra?
No.
Well, we'll make it then.
There's a place for you to put in your own.
Yeah, your own creation.
Oh, well, we'll just reword it.
Yeah, so if you...
So we put five, we still have to pick five, but we can suggest including the other two in there. I mean, they say you can include your own, but I think, based on our discussions here, that we've, we agree with two more of these, I would rather submit two more of these than... All right, so let's pick a top five. I'm going to just go with the ones that have the most names on it, and then we'll go backtrack. I have 1-2, let's say 1-2 is item number one. 2-8, item number two. 4-1, item number three. Let's go back to the beginning.
1, 3 was, they made a pretty compelling argument for that one, I think.
All right, so we go 1, 3. Should we do 1, 3 and 1, 4?
Yeah.
That's 4 and 5?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you put 1, 10 as an...
1, 10 would have to be an alternate.
Okay.
3, 2 would have to be an alternate.
Okay.
Which one is 5?
5, 1, 4. So let me read them through again. I got, for top five, we have items 1-2, 1-3, 1-4, 1, or 2-8, 4-1 as our top five. Alternates would be...
3-2? 1, 4?
Yes, I lost some of them.
No, 1, 10.
1, 10 and 3, 2 would be our alternates. Does that look right to everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the five specific items and the two alternate items as discussed for our submittal for the ASBA delegate assembly.
Second.
All right. Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you. Thank you for everybody for putting up with the most boring part of the meeting, I totally understand. Oh, wait, no, there's budget. Moving on to action item 6D, the expenditure budget revision number two.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Sigara Jones, I'm going to just walk you through the changes that we're making for the final revision, and we'll walk you through, I'll walk you through on perhaps the why. Let's see, if you look at this bar graph here, this 8,323, that was the ADM that was used to build the budget, and I think it was in December, we said, hey, we're seeing a decline at a faster rate than we had projected. I think when we built the budget, we were looking at about a 4.2 or so percent decrease. We were seeing about a 7% decrease, and then in the end, it's slight, it went up just a little bit from the last revision. So in other words, from 4 to 7 to what appears to be at about a 6.2 enrollment decline, or an ADM decline, it's pretty significant. Years ago, the state funded rapid decline. In other words, if you were declining at a fast rate, they were going to help you absorb that by giving you additional funds to absorb anything above 5%. So it just kind of gives you an idea of the times have changed, when the state used to fund more things to where we are today. This is an important slide, because again, it gives you an idea of what we had predicted pre-pandemic. There's a lot of talk about, that was temporary, and at least from my perspective, the decline is at a faster rate than what we had projected a couple of years ago. This is just a snapshot comparing the various revisions that we made back in July to December, and then now. This was an important piece. The enrollment has decreased so drastically that, if you remember, during the summer, we put this one-time money in capital as a placeholder, but the enrollment declined so drastically that we had to move it out of capital as a placeholder, and move it back into MNO so that we could have a more balanced budget. Without those monies, we'd be struggling today. This analysis or this chart is on the capital, unrestricted capital side, and you can just kind of see that, again, in August, we had the 2.3, 2.4 million, but we had to move it out of capital and put it into MNO to, again, have a balanced budget and be able to afford the things that our students need, and just to meet all the necessary expenses that we incur on an annual basis. And so we had it at 13.3, but in reality, it's about 10.7 million before you hear today. This is really page 7 of the budget. To me, this is one of the most important pages in your budget, so pages 7 and 8, pages 1 and 4, to me, those are the most important budgets, or budget sheets in all those documents that you have before you. And again, we just want to kind of show you where we are with the ADM pieces, because it's, again, pretty significant decreases. Let me just point this out, this took us, we had a lot of discussion in the office with my team, there's a reduction of about $422,000, and that was actually because of a lower ADM that we had presented to you last May. In other words, the ADM dropped, and so they had to reduce that in this year, about You know, we've had this slide so that the public understands kind of the cuts that have occurred over the last, gosh, seems forever now, but since about 2009, the 38.9 million, to give an idea, today probably builds you a school. Those are dollars that we'll never get back. You know, Prop 206, we changed the minimum wage, that will be ongoing in perpetuity. Obviously, with the decrease in enrollments, less revenue, we have to continue to identify areas of efficiencies. That has to be something that we do on an ongoing basis to try to ensure that we're being prudent, because that enrollment's going to continue to decline. And then marketing has to be a key. You know, the capital lawsuit, which I know some of you have mentioned here tonight, that does begin on May 28th, which should be the day after Memorial Day, and then that goes to the end of June. SIR 3 and the Classroom Site Fund, which you may know more as Prop 301, specifically on the Classroom Site Fund, funds what were Funds 11 and 13, we have to use, and we are using those to keep, ensuring that we meet the needs of the district. In other words, the enrollment has decreased significantly, that if we had not moved expenses out of MNO into Classroom Site Fund, and we're going to do this with SIR 3 as well, we wouldn't have a balanced budget. And then we have to be fiscally conservative in budgeting and expenditures. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may
Can we, can we go back to the first slide with the bar graph? So, and maybe this is just me personally, but there's so much going on in this slide, it kind of loses some of the impact of, I think, at some point, and maybe sooner than later, can we maybe talk about moving, removing the pre-pandemic bar, because those days are gone, and I think it helps us focus on those items coming forward. I mean, I can look all day at, man, I wish we had those kids back, I wish we will do something, but I would rather just focus on, this is the reality that we have right now.
Yeah, no, Mr. President, members of the board, we're happy to make some of those changes, and let me just kind of tell you, what I'll end up probably doing is moving these, but the reason that I want to showcase or highlight the pre-pandemic numbers is to show and remind the public that some of the decisions that you made three years ago were necessary when most did not believe the enrollment was going to decrease to the extent that it has. I'm happy to make those changes, but I just want you to know kind of the logic. I do think, you know, these, we can probably just move out and then highlight, because we will be working on a revised demographic study, and that should give us new data. You know, there's going to be challenges with ESAs, the prediction of enrollment projections has become more difficult, but we will be revising that to, you know, and we're happy to make some of those changes.
Well, maybe, because there, I mean, if you really liked this slide, I'm not going to yuck on your yum, right?
Thank you.
But maybe an additional secondary slide with just a snapshot. This is where we are this year, last year, prior, current, future year, just so we have a better, a better visual snapshot of where we're going.
Sure, we're happy to make those changes.
Okay. And not related, maybe not related to this budget revision, but has there been discussion or talks already about how the FSLA changes are going to impact our districts when we start need to look at it for this going forward?
Yes, Mr. Martinez, members of the board, we received our latest legal responses to that, and there are definitely some impacts, no doubt. I know there was a concern whether that affected our teachers or administrators and those, there, it doesn't exempt, but there are pockets of our employees that it does impact significantly, and we are currently, we met last team meeting to look at those, we were, we just were reviewing, we actually, last team meeting was a webinar we watched with attorneys, and then this team meeting will be back, where we will have identified who those pocket of employees are that will be affected by that. Yes. Mr. Bergen, anything you can add?
You did a great job.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, the reality is, we're still, it's always going to be a moving target. I mean, there is more research and study and time given in the placement of a McDonald's on a corner than there is with regards to a charter school.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bergen.
One question.
Oh, sorry, stay there.
I would just like to know, maybe not now, but in the next future meeting, you know, what kind of hard decisions are we going to have to make, you know, as we move forward? And then I would also love to sit down and talk more about the budget and really, again, break it down into cranks for me again.
I love talking about budget, so anytime, anyplace.
Mr. Haddamio, thank you for the question. As Mr. Bergen said, we will bring back the demographic study, and then, as we did way back when we had to make those hard decisions, the conversation that we have will take place with the board again, but we, and you were a board member at that time, that's why I'm just going back to that piece, is that we based a lot of those decisions off that demographic study, and it's, you know, it's telling the story again. So we will, once we have that, then we'll bring that back and talk about those hard decisions, but we will have to, if we, as you can see the trend, we'll have to have those conversations, so thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. And that, oh, no, is there a mom? Is there? There's a mom.
Lots of moms.
There's a mom.
Couple moms.
Mom, I swear, I bought you a card already. All right, is there a motion to approve the expenditure budget revision number two?
I will make a motion to approve expenditure budget for the 2023, 2024 expenditure. It passed.
See?
Why did you do this to me? I'm making a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 expenditure budget revision number two as presented.
Your second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Haddamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you. Seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, Ms. Sigara Jones, moving on to item 7A, future meetings and events, what do we have coming up?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, if you could focus on the June 6 items, we believe that at this time, we do not need to have the special meeting on May 23rd, and that is the last day of school, so we believe we don't need to have that. That meeting will just take care of all business due in June 13th. I do want to say, I do appreciate that the board will need to revise the agenda. We don't like to always revise the agenda, but it was important to us to revise this one, so that we have our new hires could be able to purchase their homes, they have to have that signed copy of their contract, so thank you for doing that. I am going to say, should we have any new employees that are in that same situation that need their contract or something, we, I would ask that we do a quick telephonic board meeting so that we don't hold anybody down from being able to purchase or lease a home.
I will not be at the May 23rd meeting, does it look like there's?
Yeah, that's the one we're going to cancel.
Yes, oh, I thought it was the other one, okay.
Now, are we still doing the board retreat on the 6th?
Yeah, we're...
Because, isn't that like the day of travel or...
We will be, we will be in Flagstaff for ASBA, so we can talk about when we might, maybe at that next June meeting, we can discuss when you might like to see a board retreat? Ms. Martinez?
Yeah, I know that we had some discussions about exactly what we would want included on the board retreat, and we definitely want to wait till later at the year, and especially since we have looking into January to actually do the board retreat, we kind of go over things. I know that there's election coming up, we want to make sure that we have all board members for the district available to be at that, at January retreat, so we can bring everybody up at the same time.
All right, moving on to summary of current events, Ms. Sigara Jones?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, as you know, many things going on. We've been with each other almost all week, we're celebrating all the different employees' groups, and so that's been exciting, but also, we want to thank all those involved in the GSD Steam Fair, that was a great event. We had both Horizon and Jack did their Dia de Ninos events, which were outstanding, so thank you for that. We also want to make sure we, and we have recognized our National School Principals' Day, we've had National Nurses' Day, also, we had National School Heroes' Day, all these events have been coming up, and we want to thank them, also National Teachers' Week, we had all those wonderful things happening, and we want to make sure that you know how much we do appreciate you. And then we had, at the City of Glendale Community Service Family and Youth Resource Fair, was hosted at GSD over the weekend, and it was quite the event. was hosted at GSD over the weekend, and it was quite the event. Thousands of, of, of community members were there. And then also on Saturday, at the same time, we had the inaugural cheer competition at Challenger, and that was so exciting to see, and, um, great competition for that. And so we were very proud of that. Um, also, I just want to, uh, say, um, in the audience, if you are a mother or want to be a mother or have a mother, please stand up, we want to recognize you. So, please stand. And I thank all of you. I think we're all mothers for our children in our classrooms every day that we do. So thank you for everything that you do, um, with that. Also, I do want to, um, Friday is Communications Day, and we have an incredible director of communications. So Adriana, um, I would like Ms. Pimentel, I would ask, and we don't do this as a practice, but you have your tablet there, is it on your tablet? Would you mind reading this, please?
It is. So Adriana Avrato Parsons is right here, the lovely lady sitting in the corner that looks very confused. I just have a little something to say. Adriana Parsons' commitment to GESD is colorfully woven through every communication channel, from captivating photos to engaging website content. Her strategic messaging and, and engaging content inspires action among our entire community. Adriana's ability to showcase the richness of our students and team truly makes our district shine. So anytime you see a great communication, anytime you see those great, perfect pictures of our kids with their parents and their teachers and their family, we owe that to Adriana. So I would just like to say thank you for everything you do on behalf of the board, and I applaud you.
Yes, Adriana, and, you know, I won't even make you write your own tweet, I'll write that one for you. Also, other things that did happen, I do want to thank, uh, under the leadership of Ms. Norma Haregi and, um, with Alex Garcia, the wonderful single the mile celebrations that took place last week. So thank you for doing that. Again, since we will not have the May 23rd board meeting, um, I want to say thank you to all of our staff, to our teachers, um, to all of our, um, support staff, all the administrators, our families and students. It's been an incredible year, and we're so proud that you are a part of GSD and that, um, we hope to see you back next year, but take time for yourself. I see a lot of our staff members here. We have a teacher, Elizabeth, thank you for you, what you do in the classroom every day. Administrators, support staff, you're incredible. Executive team, governing board, uh, thank you for what you've done. I believe we've had an incredible school year.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the governing board report, Mr. Haddamio, you have anything to share with us today?
Happy Mother's Day to everybody who is a mother, wants to be a mother, has a dog, has a, anything. You know, I'm really excited to celebrate Mother's Day with my family, my mother, and the mother of my beautiful baby that you all saw here. Also excited to, um, really, I lost my train of thought, but I like to keep my board comments short, so I'll pass it along.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Uh, well, first of all, congratulations to all who received awards over these last couple of weeks. So we've been to quite a few of those, so I just wanted to acknowledge all of you. And for the retirees, I know you're all gone, but, um, if you're listening, whatever capacity you served in this district, you have touched the lives of our kids. So thank you and enjoy your retirement. And then thanks to all the schools who put on all these events. Um, you did, did a great job, and I know the, the hard work that goes into that, and I wanted to acknowledge you for that. Um, happy, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all our teachers for all that you do. And, um, Adriana, thank you. Thank you, hello, thank you. Uh, and everybody have a safe and restful summer, and we will hopefully see all of you back in the fall. No, fall, no, not fall, late summer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pimentel.
Uh, ditto on the Mother's Day, even if you don't have children or four-legged animals of your own, the fact that you have students makes you a mother in any kind of way. And it doesn't matter if you're, what your gender is, you are making a difference in a child's life. Cheerleading competition was amazing. I just got to say, these students were great, and, uh, and I, please watch it next year. If you didn't see it this year, it was, the kids were just, they worked so hard, and it was so evident. Art show is next week, one of my favorite things to do. If you look at the back of the room, we have some samples of the art back there now. And, uh, it's going to be at Landmark, correct? On the 15th at 4:30. So please, I invite you all to go, we have some very talented students out there. Um, big shout out to Shannon and the food service team. You, you guys have, we've had so many celebrations, and they wouldn't be the same without you. So, thank you so much, you, you all work so hard. And Brenda and I always have to make sure we get our own little plate to take home later, and we both do. So, thank you. And since this is probably the last meeting before school's out, uh, enjoy your summer. Have a great time, get refreshed, and we'll come back and see most of you next year. And the ones that aren't coming back, I'm going to come and haunt you wherever you are. Have a great summer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bartels.
All right, ditto, 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 ditto. The only downside of not having that meeting, that second meeting in May, is that we don't get to reflect on the kids that we've seen promote, whether it's, you know, preschool to kinder, kinder to first, or eighth grade to, to high school.
But that gives, also gives Ms. Adriana Parsons, like, extra days to put it all together.
Yeah, I know.
And she won't have that wrinkled forehead when I go to her office and ask her, but we will, she will still put together a culmination of everything, and we'll see that in June. She'll, look, you just get an extra week, look at you. There you go. Don't worry, I'll fill it in with something. But, yeah, we will still do the same thing, yeah.
Because that, I mean, that is, you know, the, the culmination of everything for, you know, for us sitting up here, is to see that all of our children find those, those points of success. And between all of the events that we've been attending over the last year, even just the observations of going to that fall band concert and going to the end-of-year concert in their night and day, you're seeing it in the kids that are performing. You're seeing it even in the, the teachers that are, you know, they're finding their stride and their comfort alone. And then we still have more stuff coming up in the last couple of weeks before we, you know, sit there and, and we do our, our, our little tiny script at the promotion ceremonies. So, um, just like everybody else, you know, please enjoy, rest up over the summer, but, you know, look at those kids that are, you know, promoting from one grade to the next, and you all played a part in that, and it's, it's greatly appreciated, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so I went to my first ever cheer competition, um, which is also apparently GESD's first ever cheer competition. And I ain't going to lie, I've seen all of the Bring It On movies. Um, even, even the one with Christina Milian that no one liked, uh, I saw that one as well. So I felt like I went in like I was educated. Uh, and I got there, and these ladies were amazing, absolutely amazing. Every single team that stepped out there on the floor, they, they, they brought it, they did, they, some nerves right at the beginning for a couple of them, but they were out there and they nailed, every single one of them nailed it. Um, so thank you to all of the staff members that helped facilitate that event, all the people that helped. We see a lot of stuff on, you know, we go to a lot of sporting events, we go to soccer championships, softball championship is next week, right? Uh, so there's always that, so to see something like this and just realize, this is the first time we've ever done this for these ladies. Uh, they are absolutely deserving of it, uh, and special thanks to all of the high school cheer coaches that came and helped mentor those people, uh, mentors, mentor those young ladies. You did an amazing job, and I look forward to seeing what you guys can bring next year. Um, that was a lot of fun. And I remember sitting next to Ms. Bartels, Ms. Pimentel, and they're like, yeah, we're judging, we're, we've got our little scoring system, like, how do you score any of this? I, I don't understa, how do you score any of this? And, and it just, just, it was awesome, it was awesome. Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Uh, I, I lied, I haven't gotten my mom a card yet, so I need to do that this weekend because I am a procrastinator sometimes, uh, and that's just me. But cherish your mothers when you can, uh, so recognize them because they put up with your crap for many, many years. And lastly, um, promotions in a couple of weeks. Since the first time I stepped on this board, this will be the first set of promotions that I will actually miss. I mean, even for COVID, we, we got to do a little video, I remember doing the little video. Um, this will be the first set of promotions I actually miss. Uh, work has been crazy, and I'm actually going out of town for a conference I'll be presenting at in Indianapolis, so I will not be here for promotions. Uh, but one thing I always say, I like, I've gotten into saying when I'm up there and I'm accepting the class, I turn around to the students, I said, are you guys ready to become freshmen? And they always say and respond with an emphatic no, and then shake their hands furiously and say that they are not ready. But I could tell you that they are ready whether they know it or not because the people in this room have worked their butts off to make those kids ready. So whether they realize it or not, and I've seen it with my own kids, when they walk into that first freshman high school class, I can guarantee them that they are ready because the people in this school district helped make them ready. And at some point down the line, in the next six months, they're going to realize it's not as bad as we thought it was, we're high school kids now. So thank you to all of you for helping make new freshmen this year. Uh, and again, I'm sorry I will have to miss it, but, uh, just know that I would rather be there than sitting in a cold conference room any day. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, have a great evening, everybody.